To order roll call.
President Byrne?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Markward?
Here.
Okay, we have a court present, the meeting is officially on. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. You're the only citizen here, you want to say anything? You? You're the only citizen here. Citizens wish you to address the board. Okay. Nobody, eh? I don't have anything. Village Binger, uh, Mark Flushower.
I just have a couple of quick announcements, I'm going to jump around here a little bit. First thing that's not on the agenda is next Tuesday night, November 27th, at 6 o'clock, there will be a special meeting of the committee of the hall-
Yeah.
-to discuss one item, and that's a consideration for a partial redevelopment of certain parcels over at the mall.
Right. And we have, you can talk about anything else?
I've got two other quick announcements.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the next thing is that our next regularly scheduled meeting is December 11th. We only meet one time during the month of December, and that is not our regular meeting date, so if you're watching at home, December 11th will be our next meeting. And the third thing is, is before you, it was distributed in your transmittal packets last week, I put another copy in front of you, it's the meeting schedule for 2019. We tried to address, it's a tentative meeting schedule, we tried to address all the things, all the holidays, religious holidays, special events, college playoff games, et cetera, make sure there was no conflicts. So I don't know if you, if there's anything that jumps out to anyone, or if we can go ahead and use this as our tentative meeting schedule for next Tuesday.
Are these all Tuesdays?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't see anything.
December 10th will not be, and neither will, um, August 13th.
Are we going to meet on a Wednesday?
April 3rd, and the day after reelection.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
There's a little asterisk on there.
Yeah.
There's a couple of them that are not, uh, Tuesdays.
That's, okay, that's pretty good there, Mark. Anything else?
That's it.
Well, we, we have two meetings before the, uh, that 6:00 PM special meeting, and it's for, you know, the annual review of the TIF districts. One at 4:30, and then the ones, I would guess, immediately following.
At 5:00.
Four and 4:30.
Oh, four?
Four and 4:30.
Four?
Four and 4:30.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, holiday tree and menorah lighting. Joe Carey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that this coming Saturday, on November 24th, we're having our holiday tree and menorah lighting ceremony. This will take place at the Vernon Hills Golf Course, located at 291 Evergreen Drive, otherwise known as The Muni. Again, this year, we will have Mayor Byrne flipping the switch for the holiday tree, as well as the Vernon Hills Queens. We invite everyone to bring their family, friends, neighbors, kids, dogs, pets, et cetera, to, for some hot chocolate, cookies, ciders, and Country Side Fire has been able to work together to clear Santa's schedule, and he will also be making an appearance as well.
That's about it, eh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Omas will be invited. It's like your wife, right?
I'll have to get, yeah.
Grandma.
Oh, Oma and Opa, yeah.
Well, he's the one who told me.
Oma.
Oma. And Opa?
I'm O, I'm Opa.
All right. Chief Kreese.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, um, point out that the Police Department, again, is a reception place for the Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots. It's a great way to help those, uh, children, less fortunate. Uh, everyone in the community is welcome to stop by and bring an unwrapped toy. We are going to continue to collect those until, uh, December 10th. So we invite everyone to participate in that, great way to help out. And on the same theme, helping some, uh, the Vernon Hills Police Department and Lincolnshire Police Department are joining forces to help brighten the holidays for over 50 children, less fortunate, um, than others, from the, our community. And, um, through the gracious support of the Village of Vernon Hills, Walmart Foundation, um, transportation provided by Lakeside Transportation Company, food provided by Hits Pizza, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Starbucks, we get these, uh, children together for a great time. They come by the police station, they have a pizza party, and then, uh, a lot of our staff donate their own time and their family's time, and we bring them shopping with a hundred-dollar gift card for, for each of them, they have, uh, a great, uh, holiday treat. So we look forward to doing that, and we just want to thank the community for everyone's support on Cops for Kids.
What store are you taking them to?
Uh, Walmart.
Okay.
Walmart Foundation is our largest contributor to this.
Yeah, okay.
It's a great, uh, great event.
Okay, anything else on it?
No.
And I know there's a Casa, has a box, I think it's at Starbucks, next to, you know, Walgreens, where you can bring, you take this tag and you can, you know, it's a foster child, and, you know, you, you buy something for that child, you know?
Uh, we're also participating in the Salvation Army called Angel Tree Program, and many members of the village, um, have tags for designated children, and we're buying, uh, Christmas, or holiday gifts for those children as well.
Okay. All right. Next item is the unanimous vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve A through L?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Anybody want anything pulled?
I have one quick question concerning the Windy City. It's a five-year window, and I know there's not a whole lot of competitors in there. Why five years?
Um, historically, they've always done that. Uh, the last two contracts have been five-year agreements, and they, they claim that they can take those contracts and get better pricing for new amusements.
Okay.
Show they have business going out that far.
That is correct. I know for a fact that doing a five-year contract, it does better them for their insurance, which then better helps us to keep the pricing down.
Okay. All right, uh, so we got a motion is second, roll call, please. Excuse me, man.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, unfinished business. Excuse me. Uh, approval of the Menards located at 1860 Milwaukee Avenue Performance Guarantee Reduction. So how much is this one?
So the, um, the reduction's down to 10%. I don't have the math in, in front of me, um, but they have almost no remaining items there. They'll be down to the 10%, which is really what we require as far as a two-year maintenance period, so we're reducing it to that level. We have way more money in terms of the guarantee than what, uh, what we actually need. In terms of this, it was pulled from the agenda before because there is damage to the HOA's irrigation system. I learned that there was non-payment. They have now forwarded the check to Greg's Landing HOA in the amount of $790. They've received payment, so staff is recommending that we reduce it to the 10%. We're not moving them into the maintenance period until they finish a couple of punch list items, but it is fair to them to have it reduced to 10%.
Do we, do we have a cash deposit on the landscaping, or is that all letter of credit?
Uh, it's all in the shape of a performance guarantee. I, I don't believe it's a letter of credit, but it is a performance guarantee.
So a bond?
A bond, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, any other questions on that one? Is there a motion to approve?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Motion carries, is this on the, oh.
New business.
Okay, new business. Trustee Schultz.
I'm going to keep doing this until something changes. The last time we had a meeting, California, since that time, California, 12 people. And I know there's been others, but then most recently Mercy Hospital yesterday. I'll keep mentioning it and saying it. I don't know what good it's doing, but it's making us, hopefully, more aware of a situation that needs correction. That's it, thank you.
Trustee Oppenheim.
So I was at the Brookdale on Hawthorne Parkway the other day, visiting with my mother-in-law, and I had the pleasure of meeting, um, Phyllis Kennard, who is one of our new centenarians for the village, and I thought I would honor her. She turned 100 on November 7th, on Election Day, so she was actually-
And she voted?
She, and she voted.
Voted.
She voted, uh, by mail. And so she was, she was actually alive then while World War I was still going on.
Oh, yeah, no kidding?
It ended a few days-
It's a good call.
Ended a few days later.
Armistice.
Amazing, so shout out to Phyllis.
All right, Phyllis.
Yep.
Okay, Phyllis, happy belated birthday. We should give her a tape. Start off, let's give the lady a tape, or a dish. Okay, uh-
I was going to say one minute.
Oh, Trustee Markward?
Yeah, I just wanted to put a thanks out. The mayor and I went to, uh, the Vernon Hills Indian Association, the Duale, I think I'm pronouncing it.
Yeah, Duale, you celebrate Festival of Lights.
And it was actually fantastic, and, uh, thank you very much for inviting us. And love to do it again.
Yeah, it was nice.
They have the entertainment?
Yeah, they had some, a couple of really good singers, you know?
Yeah, the singer, she, she ended up-
And dancing and stuff, you know?
The individual that sang, they had, for the first, uh, time, I think, at Great America, uh, 10,000 people, so, uh-
Yeah, that was some special, yeah.
So it's something, uh, we'll probably, in fact, I wouldn't mind getting it and putting it, uh-
Yeah.
On our Channel 4 and-
Yeah, we usually do, you know, I'm sure so, Anshel will send us something, but, yeah, I was just going to say, I got dragged out on the dance floor, and, you know, I was kind of stationary, Lud and Goodman would have went nuts on me, you know, from Dancing with Stars.
I, I got some more dance, uh, steps in than me, so.
Yeah, you were more agile. Uh, okay, any other new business? All right, is there a motion to adjourn, uh, and to go into committee of the hall? We're not going into closed session, are we?
Yes, we will, but it'll be very brief. I just have one brief item to discuss with the board. Personnel.
Okay, and then we will go into closed session for personnel, but we won't come out and conduct any other business.
Correct, there's no action to be taken.
Right. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I'd like to call the committee of the hall meeting to order. The first item is approve the committee of the hall meeting minutes of November 7th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, comments, questions, you know, corrections, deletions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Markward?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Abstain.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, first item is administrative adjudication system, Chief Kreese and Attorney Hunt.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just kind of kick things off, um, a little bit with just kind of a brief overview of, kind of, where, where we are currently and how we're moving forward next. Currently, the village has an administrative adjudication process. We meet at 5:30, myself and a member of the Police Department, to handle equipment violations, parking, and animal-related, um, ordinance violations. What we're looking to do before you this evening is to align our current process with those of our surrounding communities. What you've seen in your packet is updated ordinance changes that will reflect those updates, and Chief Kreese will, um, will kind of step up and also discuss basically the next step, and that is to align and kind of move more, um, items into our adjudication process and out of the court system.
Okay, thank you, uh, and, you know, I'd just like to say that this has been, we're not exactly where we need to be, but, uh, a lot of work so far, and, uh, Attorney Hunt, Joe Carey, myself, several other members of staff have worked to, to get the process to present to you, um, and make sure we're in the right direction, and the board is, in agreement of us moving forward to present you all of the final documents. But essentially, the administrative adjudication process, the updates that we are proposing, allow us to broaden the use of this system and help keep some of the less serious offenses from having to be diverted to, um, the Lake County Court System. And so it's another layer of enforcement, it's another layer, another option of enforcement for things that are already prohibited by our village code, but presently, other than a few of the sections, if we're going to write someone a ticket under those village code, they have to go to Circuit Court, and then, um, take their time out of it. Prosecutors are involved, officers have to go to court, judges are involved, there's kind of a lot of process that goes in there. There's court fees that sometimes can be quite expensive. And, um, many communities have found that bringing these under the local administrative adjudication is a much more efficient manner. First and foremost, most of these violations, the person that receives a ticket, a respondent, can simply pay the fine and be done with it. There is no mandatory appearance. There's exceptions to that when we're dealing with minors, people under the age of 18, those are mandated to appear with, with a parent. But most of them have the option of just paying the violation, being, being done with it, um, and in cases like, uh, you know, we're talking possession of small amounts of marijuana, perhaps a petty theft, we want to ask ourselves, is sending them to court really the right, you know, avenue and using the court resources for that?
Well, plus, you got to have the officer there, right?
That, that's exactly right. So the advantages here, this system benefits the citizens that receive a citation, but yet still holds them accountable. It lessens the amount of time that staff has to spend in court, and lessens the workload on, on the court. And then, any fines that are paid are paid directly to the village instead of going to the court system, and then some percentage of that coming back to the village. So, uh, all the way around, it's a more efficient, uh, process. We've provided just an overview of the type of fine structure that we think is pretty common, given the history of Vernon Hills fines. Many of our fines are, quite frankly, on, on the low side when we look at some of the comparables, and so, um, the suggestions we have for you are not to blow those out of the water and do something drastic, but maybe inch them up a little bit in comparisons to many of the other towns, the type of fees, uh, type of fines that they assess for. For instance, uh, these different classes of violations, whether it be a parking offense, an animal offense, a non-moving traffic violation, equipment violation on a, on a vehicle, um, again, possession of small amount of marijuana, possession of alcohol by a minor, now I'm ramping up a little bit in seriousness, disorderly conduct, perhaps a, perhaps a shoving fight where no one gets injured, but again, we still want to hold some, somebody accountable. What's very important to keep in mind when we look at the, this system and these fines, this is not taking away the police officer's discretion to still send someone into the court system. So I want you to keep in mind that these are for the most minor offenses, um, and in the circumstances that you might have someone commit a retail theft, and you could envision, um, perhaps a 19-year-old with no previous law enforcement, um, contacts, stealing a $6 item is a fine candidate for this type of, uh, practice. Versus, um, someone with an extensive criminal background with theft detection or prevention devices on their, you know, person, and stealing $300 or more worth of property, they're not going to get a, an M ticket, a municipal ticket, and be sent to the, uh, hearing, that's not going to happen. They're still going to go to court. So I want, I want to just emphasize that this is just one more tool. The, um, type of, uh, the, the type of language that's in the ordinance for you, or, I'm sorry, in the code proposed, it'll be provided further into an ordinance, brings our current system up to legal standards, and make sure that it broadens it so we can use it not only for the type of enforcement that police officers take, but also if the building department, if, uh, building inspectors have to, um, enforce a village ordinance, or perhaps the village's food and beverage, uh, tax, uh, isn't being complied with, it's a nice early intervention at a low level, and just another tool in our toolbox, so to speak, so.
Can I, can I ask a question, and, uh, and the right to do this, this is statutory?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what's eliminated is any, uh, real felonies and moving violations, right?
That is correct. We cannot use this for any offense that would generate or lead to the suspension of driving privileges, so.
Or incarceration.
Right. Well, and, and of course, that would cover overweights.
That's correct, we could not use this for overweights.
Right.
Okay.
One of the other, uh, added benefits of this is it really clarifies our ordinances and consolidates them. Right now, we have really three different administrative processes spelled out in different sections of the ordinances, one with the building violations, one with, uh, things that come under the LNI Vehicle Code, and then one that's a more general. Many of these do not have a specified fine attached with our specific ordinance section or code section, but others do. That can lead to some confusion under the present system when it goes to court, because the judge has noticed, no, uh, really direction from the village as to how the village views the severity of the offense, or what the village view should be a minimum or a maximum fine in a particular situation. So, while this can certainly come to the administrative level, if it does go to the court system as well, it's going to provide that direction to the judiciary in terms of, uh, what we have. The other thing, and the chief alluded to this, but presently, uh, the legislature has tacked on so many funding mechanisms in the form of court costs. Using a speeder as an example, um, you know, you might go and you might get a $50 speeding fine, but it's going to cost you between $300 and $400 before you walk out of the courthouse, because there's about $250 in costs that get, and what that does is it tends to, on minimal cases, tends to get a judge to maybe not even impose a fine, but just impose costs because they're statutorily required, which means the, the village would receive nothing in that situation. So really, there's a benefit here to residents, that this actually can be a, a less expensive option for them, because even if they were to pay, let's say, a hundred-dollar fine, that would be substantially less than no fine going to court, because of the court costs.
So where's the $250, go to the state?
Uh, no, the, the $250 here on a business offense, that would come to the village. 100% of the fines under the administrative process would go to the village. We also have the ability to set maximum, and as a home rule, we're not constrained by the statutory of 750, uh, that applies to non-home rule communities for certain types of things. And, and of course, there could be, think about a building code violation or something very serious, you wouldn't necessarily want to be constrained by that. There might be something that would warrant, uh, a greater fine.
So if, if, if Mayor, there is, if you learn that there's consensus of the board to move forward, what we would do, and we've already done a fair amount of work in preparation, we just didn't want to get too far over our skis, um, a much more extensive list of the individual ordinances, individual, um, sections and violations that apply to this, and a specific minimum fine that would be assessed in an administrative, uh, hearing process. And then, the ordinance and some other crafting here, and we'd bring that back before you for, uh, action, uh-
What kind of revenue do, do we generate on the average? Is there, do you have any idea?
No, it's, right now-
What is adjudication system?
I can tell you very little under the current, um, ed-
Under the current adjudication process, we don't collect any.
Nothing.
What's that?
We don't collect any fines, or, um, through the current adjudication process.
It's vastly outdated, it needs to be-
What is that?
Currently, because it needs to be updated, that's, that's been a process that's been put in place recently. Part of the, if you go back to the statement that we, both the chief and I made earlier, that many of these ordinance sections do not provide for a specific fine, in those situations, they all ended up going to court. And because they went to court, we'd get maybe 10% of whatever the fine revenue would be anyway. So, um, this, this, you know, it's not, certainly not the purpose to create revenue, but it would have, uh, that benefit.
It's, it's, I think it's safe to say this, the research I've done on, uh, these programs, and other communities have established it, have found that the net, uh, fees and fines collected from these systems pay for the cost of running the system, because we will incur some costs, we have to hire an administrative adjudication officer, we'll-
It's a lawyer.
Correct, correct. And we'll have to have a prosecutor help us, uh, with this, so there are some costs, but those communities that have done-
Who will be the prosecutor?
Um, we, we'd likely use the village prosecutor for this process, as well as the court process.
So you're saying, which, which prosecutor?
We use, um, uh, the Winers. How Weiner, uh-
Okay.
Is our, is the village prosecutor.
What's that? Why do we Weiner is? I mean, I'm just saying, he'll, they'll, they'll do-
Yes.
The building-
Yeah.
Code stuff?
They would be, they, they could serve as a prosecutor for our local ordinances that come here as well.
Okay.
We would need to assign, though, an administrative law judge, uh, I'm sorry-
Yeah, well, you were not setting this up to, what, after the first of the year?
Correct, there's some work to be done, it'd be after the first year, before it's running, so.
Well, maybe we should talk, we, we got to talk to some people that, you know, the adjudication attorney, the judge.
Certainly, certainly, but in terms of the ordinance and the process, that should be ready to go, I would think, at the December meeting, in terms of finalization of the fine schedule, the actual ordinance itself.
Yeah.
And then there's the administrative setup time of, uh, certain forms that need to be done, and the internal process and so forth, but I would think within 60 days from now, it ought to be-
Yeah.
Operational.
Trustee Schultz.
Two questions, um, and I'll listen to anybody who cares to offer an answer. Would we funnel maybe some of the health and liquor violations through this, as opposed to bringing them before the Liquor Commission? Would that be a reasonable application of this process also?
Not in terms of, not in terms of liquor licensing, um, or business licensing.
But violations thereof, uh, so that-
Well-
Be, as opposed to having, uh, the commissioners do the adjudication.
Yeah, well, but they, if, if they agree and we fine them, I mean, they're just writing a check to, uh, you know, Monica, correct? If we find somebody for cert-
I guess, I'm looking for an opinion, would it be a better use of that, uh, resource as time?
If, if you so directed us to look into that, we could, we could look into that as an option, I just don't know it's an option.
It, it's, it's possible for certain, um, minor health, uh, there was the, the issue at the last meeting-
Right.
-where somebody had a sewer backup or something like that. But anything that deals with, um, for example, selling liquor to underage, things like that, you wouldn't want to relinquish your, your authority as a liquor commission for that. You still want to maintain the licensing hold as the, as the ultimate punish.
And the licensing is tied in, that's, not totally the liquor, it's, it's also tied-
Business.
Well, yeah, because-
Sure.
Our guys have been cross-trained to at least go, we got to call the Health Department.
Right.
And we've done that for years, so.
I, I guess it was-
Mike?
Yes, Your Honor, we have.
Yeah, you know, we started doing it after, you know, the Chili's incident.
Right.
Right. Chili's and also the Maravilla.
Also, so the second question, though, is because in this process, as I read, issuance of the ticket or the violation is prima facie evidence that a violation occurred. Do the code enforcement, Mike and Mike's guys, do they need to be sworn?
No. So the, there is a due process with these systems, but it's less burdensome than the traditional court system. So a properly repaired report, provided, and business records, essentially hearsay is allowed, and the administrative hearing officer can look at that evidence as well as a respondent can present evidence at an E, you know, in a, in a more friendly, less.
Adversarial.
There you go.
Understand that, but I, I guess I'm just.
They don't need to be a sworn law enforcement officer.
Well, no, not, not necessarily a sworn law enforcement, but someone similar to myself, who I have taken an oath, assuming this position, to uphold the Constitution and to, you know, be fair and faithful and honest and all that good stuff. And so I'm wondering if that same requirement should be required of anyone issuing a citation that is gonna require adjudication to propagate the fact that they are under obligation of oath to be forthright and honest in the, in the materials that they're presenting.
There's really two aspects to that. First is, does the law require it? And second is, should we? And the, the first answer is, no, the law does not require that, but that certainly is some. We could have those individuals within, who are not already sworn police officers, for example, our building inspector or something, you know, sign an oath to that extent. But it, you know, certainly, this is what we ask them to do on a daily basis anyway.
Right.
When we ask them to go out and inspect and, and so forth.
Right.
So it, it, it may not be necessary, but certainly it's something that, you know, if you provide that direction, we can include that.
Trustee Appenheim.
So overall, I think it's a great idea. But on a similar vein as Trustee Schultz's questions, I'm just curious, will, will the public perceive this as a money-grabbing exercise in that possibly not only law enforcement officers, but also building inspectors might suddenly start writing a lot of citations because the officers wouldn't have to show up in court? And nor would they? I mean, basically, it's just for.
Well, if that happens, we, obviously, we can monitor this. I don't, I don't think.
Discretion that's used now can be.
Yeah, they certainly have the discretion now. And the other thing to keep in mind is this is not really a new system, and to suggest that it is, is, is really an error. We currently have this system in place, as I say, in three different sections of the code. What this really does is update it, bring it all together, and make all the different types of violations under the same set of rules. One of the added benefits that it has, for example, under the section under the vehicle code, has this sort of arcane process set up where non-residents get to submit things in writing, but residents don't necessarily get to do that. We're affording that option to both residents and non-residents, anybody who would receive a citation. So there's really three ways to, to deal with a citation. One is to pay it, one is to request a hearing, and one is just to simply submit a written response, and the hearing officer would consider the written response without the person having to take time off of work to come in. So in that sense, it's a much more user-friendly and certainly not an option they would have if you were sending them to court.
And I would also just say, I, I, I do really, I'm glad someone asked that question because when, anytime we're taking enforcement action that involves a potential fine, there's always some, sometimes there's susceptibility for people to think we're out to grab money. And, and here's what I tell everyone is, there's no money to be made in, in, in tickets, period. And very, and I don't know of any towns in Illinois that even attempt to do it. Maybe in other states, it might be another issue, the cost that goes along with this. So officers are out there, they're directed to enforce the law, keep a peaceful community, hold people accountable, and many times we can do that with a warning and other times we have to do that with, with enforcement action. But most people are gonna see this option as a $50 or $100 fine that they can pay without having to go anywhere, much, much more, you know, less cumbersome than a, a ticket, having to go to court and not knowing what the judge might assess in court that day.
And frankly, God forbid they don't make it to court. I mean, a judge can issue a bench warrant at that point. And now you've really ratcheted up exponentially the, the whole situation, which to begin with was really designed to get somebody's attention and ensure compliance.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just playing devil's advocate, but I just wanted to.
Now, I just wanna.
Thank you.
I just wanna clarify, and, and I don't know, if this isn't accurate, then, then tell me. But, you know, I, I have, you know, basically, once tickets were issued, you know, waived, you know, the ti, the ticket process, because they did it at the school and it was conference night or something like that, or we did it at Or Shalom one time, that was good. You know, and so we wiped out those tickets. But I, is that my call? No, probably not.
No, in fact, that becomes the administrative judge's call, the administrative hearing officer.
Yeah, but when you, yeah, okay, well.
That gets into, that gets into ultimately the discretion that.
I guess, I don't, but it was only in a couple of, you know, instances like that where it was like, this is like punitive, because they had overflowed crowds, you know, going, you know, okay, okay. All right, I'll, I'll nick say that, but I mean, you know, okay. Well, the police can do that.
Is it appropriate for the board to offer a motion to direct staff to prepare the necessary findings, paperwork, forms, et cetera, in the formalization of a final ordinance for this particular process?
That, is that a motion?
I believe it is. Took a long way. I took the road to work, which is hard to get there.
I will find a way to consider seconding that motion. Thank you.
Well, fortunately, we're, fortunately, we're on tape, right? You know, so you could write it out. But okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
I'll consider finding a way to say aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This'll come back sometime in the future, right?
Yes, sir. Should be in December.
December 11th.
Okay, all right. All right, well, we, we need to, what, adjourn, adjourn, go into closed session to talk about personnel.
That's correct.
So, who?
No.
No, we already, Melanophy is the guy, the guy doing the survey for us is Melanophy, John.
Would he like to speak to us tonight?
Okay. Oh, yeah, we are, no. No, no, no. Oh, he already did it, omnibus.
It was on the omnibus.
Yeah, okay. All right, so there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you and good night. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Yeah, I don't know. That sounds.